Morning, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Monday, May thirteenth. Like to call the meeting to order, and if you please stand and join since fine with our invitation, please welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you for the welcome and your special meeting today, of course, and the election, there's nothing like an election that divides a community. So today I am bringing you a prayer of unity so that we move forward in in the work and the purpose of which I'll give an elected. Holy and gracious God, we come to you asking for your guidance and strength to work together as a community. Help us to find common ground and mutual understanding so that we may be unified in our purpose. May we set aside our differences and focus on the tasks so our efforts may be more impactful. Help this elected body cooperate, be patient and kind, and be mindful of each other's contributions. All were chosen and trusted by this community to work together. Give immunity, wisdom, guidance, and may all citizens move forward with the shared purpose and work towards a common goal enthusiastically and gracefully. We ask these things in your name, amen.
And please strongly pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, now now I'm going to attend to my own remodel ADA breast drip that is a place starting today.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Seeing none, approval of the minutes, did you guys have a chance to review the minutes from May seventh, twenty twenty four? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
So move say.
Then moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Can I share comments? Share this.
I would go ahead.
Hey. Sure know. The only thing I have is I have a project concern meeting this Wednesday, I knew. So, okay, new business, Michelle Phillips County clerk and election official for the twenty twenty four Walnut Township Special Election Canvas.
I'm just gonna basically pass this around because I only made my copy unofficial. And then I have a. Thank you. I have. The Walnut Township Special Recall of the treasure election, it was held on the seventh. Um, we had one hundred and fifteen total voters. In advanced and in at the polling location. Out of those, I only had three of them that were provisional. So those three is are the three that I will ask you about in regards, I do have my recommendation from statute. So. Do you guys have any questions in regards to the numbers that were presented?
Um, I I don't.
Okay. Um, I have the three, I'm gonna go ahead and go in the order that they're here. I have one voter that had a change of address. The or they, they moved, I don't know who it is, they moved within the township. But then they didn't revoke or didn't re-register their address. So they just just had a change of address, they moved within the township, they voted the correct ballot. Um, total recommendation for statute twenty five dash twenty three fifty three is recommendation to count. So do you want me to go ahead and go through the all three of them and then make a motion?
We can. Or how? Just do it individually, if that's okay. Okay, so I would look for a motion to um, count the change of address ballot as um, recommendation from our county clerk, do I have a motion to approve?
So move say.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, we will count.
That ballot, perfect. I did have a um, person who voted, um, they had to do provisional. They are a registered voter of Atchison County, however, that however, they are registered in Mount Pleasant Township, not in Walnut Township. And per recommendation of the specifications that need to, you need to have in order to vote is you have to have. Um, that residency under the Walnut Township, so per statute twenty five dash twenty three oh two, this one is recommended not to count.
They just confused as to where they were just.
Probably, yeah.
On the line. I think there are a lot of people that own ground in Walnut and felt like they had a voice, but they don't live there. Right. So they just didn't realize they thought.
Right.
They could vote, but.
Right.
I heard that often.
That's the thing with registrations, it's off of your permanent residence. So a lot of your college students go to school, but they still claim their home as residence. So that's how that works on some.
So I'd look for a motion to not count the ballot of the voter not registered in Walnut Township as presented from the county clerk, got a motion to approve.
So move second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. And I passes three to zero.
And the third and last one. Is um, a registered voter in advance, male. Um, returned their ballot, we received it the day after the election with no postmark. Um, unfortunately, the US Post is just some as before, they've basically given this person, we've given the person the opportunity to vote the USPS took it away. Because there's no postmark, um, KSA twenty five dash one oh six and twenty five dash eleven thirty two basically state. Any of the ballots received which are postmarked on or otherwise indicated by the USPS to have been mailed on or before the close of polls on the date of election. Um, would be able to count since this one is not marked, recommendation would be to not count it.
Okay, but for a motion to not count the ballot without the postmark stamps as presented from our county clerk.
So move say.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Okay, so I have this one, I will go up, we'll get it on, and I'll bring you down a, an official abstract.
Sounds favorite.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
A Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, Purchase Order Approval and Atchison Senior Village POs and Plumbing Project POs.
Yeah, so I have five purchase orders. Two for Senior Village, two for Plumbing, ARPA, and then one that I got this morning. So. Bear with me because I have to do the minutes on them as we go through them.
No, absolutely, and we have plenty of time, so don't let us rush you.
The first one is purchase order paid to Atchison Senior Village. It is through that pass-through fund, so it was money we received. Um, it's all. Their money, but it the the check is made out to Atchison County, so we have to receipt it in and then issue them a check. Um, out, so I've received the money in, and then this is just a purchase order for you guys to approve to pay it out. So it'll be paid out of the Senior Village Pass Through Fund for thirty thousand, six hundred, yeah, thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay. Alright, so I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our finance director um, to senior, to Atchison Senior Village. Um, out of the Senior Village Pass Through Fund, it's invoice twenty twenty four dash two. To pay out Atchison Senior Village, money is received from inside, that is after sale date of services in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents, do I have a motion to approve?
So move second.
I moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you. Second. Purchase order is paid to Atchison Senior Village. We, they took ownership March first, so January and February of twenty twenty four. We were to pay bed tax to K Dads. For quarter one, so because we were still, we still had the facility at that time. Um, we should pay our portion of the bed tax. So they went ahead and paid quarter one, nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars. But for one in two months of that, they're asking reimbursement. For two thirds, which is six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Then um, we received a United Healthcare claim. That part of it was covered from a resident that we still under the county, and then part of it was after they had taken over. So um, we received the check and we received the full amount in, they didn't know at the time that it was. Partially theirs after March and April, so we got January, February, and they have March and April. Um, again, six thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents, so there's some documentation here that kind of backs up some of that. And and how much they've paid and what we've received and such, but so the total of that is twelve thousand, two fifty-two seventy.
Okay.
We would issue a check for.
Okay. Um, awesome, so I would look for a motion to approve this purchase order as presented from our finance director. Um, out of the Atchison Senior Village Fund um, to Atchison Senior Village. It's prorated bed tax and prorated UHC Medicaid claims in the total amount of twelve thousand, two fifty-two seventy, I have a motion to approve.
Also move second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Maybe a little post book discussion, just um. Anything else like this you should know about there, and I know the bed tax and maybe it's more payments, I can see that.
Yeah, um. I didn't realize bed tax, that was still outstanding. At the time when when you had asked me last, um, I really don't think that's anything else now.
There's always surprises.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, there's no penalties, no fees, um.
There's gonna be some more split payments, I'm sure, on complaints.
Yeah, for a while, they are in the process of getting their own numbers and and getting everything from script over to inside fully. There's just little things that trickle through, so.
Well, we've known that uh, it's gonna take some extrication to to separate all accounts and everything, so this is really a surprise.
Right, right. Okay, so those are the two for Senior Village, um, that I have two for ARPA, it was the plumbing project that Brian had done. Originally, you guys had approved a PO with a company to come in and do the work, but there, I guess, was some. Other costs that needed to be done before they could get started doing the work, and one of those. Um, was work on the water heater to. Take it apart and hook it back up after the plumbing project. So Brian has a PO to Gerber Electric in for six hundred and seventy-four dollars and five cents. He was wanting to get it out of ARPA.
Okay, so that's why we're approving it, because it's not out of his budget. Okay. Um, alright, so I would look for a motion to approve um, Gerber Electric for six hundred and seventy-four dollars and five cents. Paid out of the ARPA fund to hook up water heater for the courthouse plumbing project, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second, moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, and moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Will there be some additional costs on that project, because it sounds like, I was here one day, they were, it sounded like they were doing additional. Valve board and some things, was that all part of it?
Well, I, I have another one about that.
Oh, that's probably, okay, that's probably.
There could be something else.
Yeah.
But uh.
Brian explained better than I can, but.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so I have another purchase order to the hardware store for thirty-eight dollars and forty-two cents for fasteners, PEX line, PEX fittings. To install water valves on the courthouse plumbing project. He had thought since it was part of the plumbing, but it should stay through ARPA.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve this purchase order to the hardware store out of ARPA for thirty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
Awesome. Same.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye. I would like a spirited debate about a thirty-eight dollar bill. If only anyone else.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, there's that. Talking to you, talking to you, and shut off valves, maybe that's not part of the big project, I would expect bigger bill than that.
Yeah. Well, I know that he had showed us like there's some water shut offs here.
Yes, yeah, just like a manifold system.
Yeah, and we have not received that invoice yet from that company.
Okay.
They were working on it, so I.
I think it's additional cost there. Can't imagine in an old building, you'd have surprises.
Yeah. Um, this, this PO, uh. I was asked about it a while ago and um, I finally found where. We talked about it, but um, so now Brian uh, has. To the Home Depot, we would like to buy a vacuum. Um, it's for two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. It was in his twenty-three budget, but I don't know what happened at the time, he didn't buy it then. So he had money left over in his twenty-three budget, we rolled it over. To the reserve, and then those reserve funds for twenty twenty-four was used to lower the mill levy. So he doesn't have it in his budget to buy it for twenty-four. He had it in twenty-three, um, so and I don't know where you want to take it out of if you approve it.
What's the cost?
Two thousand, six fifty-eight, nineteen. There's documentation, you can look at it if you.
Look out, is it a big shop back of some kind? Sounds like.
I don't know, I think he was gonna try to be in here to explain it, but okay.
Yeah, um, I would look for a motion to table this for further discussion. Just because when I first flip it over, the rating on this particular vacuum is a one star. So we, but I'm just saying, we might want to talk about what what the use is and and what.
Well, she's getting the message.
Oh.
The motion table, we just just settle there.
Well, because, yeah, I mean, also two thousand, that's.
It must be a little more than normal.
Yeah. Hi, sorry, we have questions about the vacuum, what it's for, and then also when I flip the page, it shows it's one star, so.
That one is for the, we talked about um, last year's budget, buying a vacuum to clean ceilings. Is that what you're talking about on that? Yes, so that's a vacuum that reaches thirty-seven feet, and we can clean the courtroom ceiling vents and over at the jail. We can reach up there and get to them, right now we can't.
Can you hold it thing up through that one?
Yeah, yes, very light, it's almost like the wa- window washer that we uh, got except for it's a vacuum.
How often do you think something like that would be done, I'm just wondering like.
I think probably.
Because they have companies that.
Yeah, I know, I would say probably every month for the vents. If we can get to them, the sprinkler heads probably every month, uh, we take a brush to them now.
Part of sprinklers too.
We take it on the sprinkler heads and be able to suck them off and get the dust, so yeah. Right now, we have to take the lift in there, which I'm getting ready to do today, and get up there and get to the uh, sprinkler heads.
So do you think that should be something we should look at after renovations of, I'm just wondering, because renovations are gonna cause.
You're gonna need the string renovation too. You know, clear all the dust, make it cleaned out.
You have it in your budget this year?
We had, we have it to buy, right? I think I'm pretty sure we put it in there, last year, yeah, it's not for this year's, it was from last year. So we had it, I just didn't purchase it because in January, they didn't have it, so they've got it back in stock now.
So do you, do you have it within this year's budget right now? Because so last year's budget, um.
Is gone.
Yes, I know, uh, I think what if we'd have it still yet this year.
If you.
Yeah, I mean, we might have to take it from something, but we'd still have it. In there.
So within your budget.
Yeah. I just, it's more than what purchased, so I just brought it in to be approved.
The memorial hall, courtroom, we have other high ceilings too, the hallways.
And the jail, I assume mostly, yeah, a lot of the sprinkler heads and stuff over at the jail, but our vents are the big thing, we can't reach.
Quite a bit of use for it then.
Yeah, I think so.
But down the time too, you're not moving the lift everywhere.
Lift your ladders, we're not going up, we're not climbing.
Is that your best option on this one?
That that is for that one, I mean, they make a few others that are a little more expensive, but. For the lightweight ones, that's the cheapest option that I could find, so.
Okay, so I have a purchase order um, to the Home Depot, out of the maintenance department budget um, for two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none.
You should put on there, that comes out as surprise budget.
Yeah, that's why I said in my motion, I made sure to say that. You're fine, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. You heard the clanking noise, it was my wheels.
Three to zero. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
So soon.
Official now, um, yes, votes to do the eight oh ninety-one, no votes twenty-one. Um, I know when you do the math, it doesn't add up to the total number of votes that we had. I had one, well, that's why I brought my tapes, I had one vote, one one ballot that was cast with no votes. It was under undervoted, not a yes or a no.
Not the other. Is that one of the ones that we just had, because it wasn't, we added two votes.
Better one, no, we had a one, we did, we said noted to you.
Yeah, we said noted to, alright, yeah, there's my.
Okay. So I would look for a motion um, to approve the Walnut Township Special Recall Election Official Results as presented from our county clerk. As a total of ninety-one yeses, twenty-one noes, um, do I have, do I have a motion to approve?
Also move to say.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes. Three to zero.
So I will certify these results to the township board. Thank you. And it will be there. In our pocket.
The statute provides KSA twenty-five to forty-three thirty, that the office is vacant the day after the certification is done, so that would be tomorrow presumably. Uh, so if you're going to do a request for letters like you did previously, uh, you should probably set. Set that on your agenda. As we've. Kind of learned from experience to to not setting a specific deadline, and further, you're not bound by a person wouldn't be to submit. Something to be considered, that would be up to the three of you to decide, you're not, you're not limited, you have to elect a, you have to appoint an elector from the township. Uh, is the, and it cannot be the person that was.
Recalled.
That was recalled from the office, but other than that, you're you're free to do whatever you want regarding the appointment, the appointment process, so.
We could put that announcement out that.
I'm suggesting you you do that now, and if you're going to request some, if you're going to invite some letters of interest to to do that, and then put a date. Either a week from tomorrow or two weeks from tomorrow at your regular meeting to be considered.
That'd be the twenty-eighth.
Have have, yes, however you wanted to do it.
And just by the elect um, meeting time or.
Yeah, so, yeah, we talked about that and looked how the city did it last time, they just put and vacant until filled. So that up until our time of appointing someone, welcome, you know, letters of interest, so. Um, and looking at the calendar, I don't think it matters one or two weeks because we're gonna miss their next meeting, so. It won't be like, well, point before their next meeting.
He told me he might move the meeting.
Oh, he might move, so I mean, we can do a week.
They were talking about having a meeting on the twentieth instead.
Well, but we would be the twenty-first.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter if we're the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth, they're gonna meet on the twentieth probably.
Right.
So.
You talk about moving it up if we needed to, but that's that's up to them.
Gotcha. So what do you guys think, one week, two weeks?
I'd give it two weeks, because if that way, there will probably be a story in the globe, I think that ought to be part of the story that gives people opportunity and takes. A while for things to happen, so I would suggest two.
We'll look at letters of interest on the twenty-eighth and appoint someone.
Okay.
And consider appointment that day, but it will remain unfilled until we decide, because I wouldn't, I don't want a hard deadline.
No. It'll remain open until filled.
Remain open.
By culture.
Yeah, and I think we looked up that wording after the last time, you know, that we had it.
Right.
So, awesome.
I will go ahead and get something on the website and on social media, and we'll just, perfect. Because like I said, it is, like Pat said, it's it is your guys' discretion, so um, we'll just put on there that it'll be looked at, and if anything comes in, I will immediately forward them to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I have an Atchison County right-of-way permit application, um, and this is for Kansas Gas Service. Um, at one seven five eight nine, two hundred and eighty-sixth Road in Atchison, the homeowner needs service line cut ten, cut back ten feet. And the work is planned for. Well. We need to approve this, the work, it says the work was planned for May ten, but um, so do I have a motion? Well. I'll read what's on the back too.
She needs a backup thing.
Oh, when I reached out in the middle of demolition, then rebuild, so do I have a motion to approve this county right-of-way permit application?
Also move. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Yes, and they were not propane before possibly. If they're doing a demolition and a rebuild. Just guessing, didn't matter for this.
Sure, is line cut that ten feet, I'm not sure.
Sometimes they just wanna get in, get into the right-of-way because they're gonna reattach.
Yeah.
From them.
Yeah.
Place of.
She didn't have some show, she's here.
Did you want us to sign this also?
Uh, we did the last couple that we did last week, so I didn't know if you guys wanted. No one told. Yeah.
If you don't, it's actually a good cover. That will be consistent.
Okay, does anyone have unfinished business? Um, I have one thing to get clarification on, I sent an email this morning um, on vendors. Pat, do you know how that process works if someone wants to become a vendor um, for a towing and wrecker service for the Atchison County to utilize them?
No, uh, I think the sheriff, it's just for like if there was an accident and um, there's a. Disabled car needs to be towed following an accident, is that?
Yeah, so this gentleman owns a towing company and wants to be part of the county's.
I should look at your email.
You're fine. Um, wants to be part of the county's towing list, um, and.
I think we made, I think uh, joint communications or communications maintains that kind of list.
Okay.
But I'm. I'm ignorant of the details.
Okay.
It seems like it's done through dispatches, like a rotation or something. Seems like in the past that they've had that list, and then they rotate now.
Yeah.
So the same one don't get to call every first every time.
So this gentleman called me and he said he reached out to the sheriff's office, and they said the Board of County Commissioners appoints these folks. And then they went to the clerk's office and they sent him to law enforcement, so I'm just trying to get him an answer of.
Yeah, it's private requirements for insurance and all that, so it's a matter of getting all that.
Well, that's assuming we have a policy, we may not, and I I know that in some communities, it's been discussed, there's also a uh, a fee schedule they have to agree to. So they they don't have somebody tow the car and say, alright, it's four thousand dollars to tow your car. Yeah, well, you should have asked before the car was towed.
Right.
When I was in an ambulance going to the hospital, you know, uh, I don't know that we have a policy on it. So we can certainly look into making one if we don't have one. Um, but I'm, as I said. Um, but I'm, as I said, I'm ignorant of the policy.
Okay, but historically it's been dispatched that's. Utilize that service.
I, I think so, and I think I've only run across it in the context of in the city.
Okay.
So, I know, I know that in the city it's like that, I don't have a candidate.
Seemed like we dealt with this something about, maybe back in twenty sixteen. That's the last time that I've even heard any mention of it, so, and it seemed to me like it was, we were dealing with the fee. Fee cost. But I don't remember ever having. Approved or, or. Ruled on whether someone was. Uh, eligible to be a vendor, so. Let's go in our meeting, can we reach out to the sheriff, maybe you do.
Yeah, so I sent an email this morning, um, with, yeah, Joe Snyder, Corey and Jack on it with the clerk's office because. I figured out of those three, someone's using the tow services, Corey wasn't, um. Hadn't, didn't have knowledge about the process to be on the list. Um. Uh. But, yeah, maybe I'll get. Some guidance so that I can. Tell him.
Earlier, the sheriff, just a couple miles south of me, there was a car abandoned in a snowdrift in the middle of a township road. And they kept reporting it. To this, and I, I think that the vehicle was so totally not worth a penny that nobody wanted to tow it. Because it's like, we're gonna end up with a tow bill and a derelict car that was worth nothing, and so it sat there for like two to three weeks in the middle of the road. And it's kinda like, I'm gonna let this one work itself out, but I, I. Where would it happen, basically? I, it got moved, I'm not even for sure. Who took responsibility if the owner finally came back for it, but. It was, it's kinda wild. Why don't we do it warmed up? Well, maybe, uh, it might have been stuck in.
Um, also, Michelle had sent us three different county, uh, well, actually Jackson County and Pawnee County, uh, county building use. Um. And I didn't know if you guys had a chance to look at those.
I did look at, um.
Or if we want to put that on our agenda to like, work something up or what your thoughts are?
Probably a watered-down version of one, I would see that a couple of them are a little more involved, they must use their. Their solider slot or something. To me, that. Whoever would be, wanna be ready, almost needs to have. A sponsor that would be. Responsible for. Seeing that everything gets done, that they get out, that there's security or whatever, so almost like. You apply and then you would have to have. The clerk or maintenance or somebody sign off on that, they would be here, because we have to have somebody here after hours. Somebody that could be able to lock the doors. To, to do that, so we would almost need someone, a department head preferably to. To sign off that they would be, I, I call it a sponsor, I don't know if that's the right word.
Yeah, well, and that's what, and so on Jackson County's application, um, they end up charging a rate of forty dollars per hour per county employee that's required to be here. Um, so if you do need restrooms, custodial, you know, all the things. Then you can assess a fee, um, but more of an application process so that you have to give the name of your organization. Um, and if you're nonprofit, like what your E I N number is, um, contact information. It's more of an application process than a, yes, right, so, so that you have that communication of. We'd like to use your facility, here's what we need, and then us going back and saying, okay, based on what you need, it'd be this amount of money, you know?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I know Pawnee County is a little simpler.
Yeah.
So.
But I think Jackson's pretty easy to, to see and to your point of knowing what's needed and then making sure that.
And who's responsible for, for being, cause. Uh, something else, I, I don't remember, I had went through them very, very quickly and haven't reviewed them, because I didn't know we were gonna be talking about that today, but, um. What about? Having, when it could be rented, is this after hours? Because I think that also, uh, if someone wanted to have it during the day, well, I mean, it could be disruptive. Like the last meeting that was here was during business hours, it was disruptive to the public. Um, I think that this needs to be. Out, out of normal business hours. Of the county.
So that's what they put, dates required and starting times, you can either put morning or evening, um, and all of that will be put in. In front of us, and then the three commissioners and the custodial staff all sign off on it.
Well, I wouldn't, I don't know if I would give them a choice to have it during the day if. While this, uh. Public. I think the challenge to me is, it's easy to react based to what happened recently, and that's probably. Someone inferred a part of that group, it's also inferred other groups and they wanna come in here, so I think. It's easy to have that. The heat of the moment, make you make a decision, but. But I, I do think it'd be okay to have it during day or evening, but there'd be a different cost. But then it also is a matter of, uh, scheduling around courthouse events if the department needs to use this room, so I'm psyched. Or raise a little more thought on how we do this. Well, that was part of it, this room is used by many different offices, even for bookings for interviews, for things like that. And we've even talked to, uh, the courts, if they go through their renovations, possibly be, be in, needing to use this room. For, for extra rooms, uh, so I, I still, I, the thing is, I think we can also. I wouldn't say that was a typical meeting, but it also pointed out what can happen and how it can affect. The, uh, the public and the, and our employees and things there, and I would really shy away from having it during business hours, yeah. So.
Well, and I think something like this, the application piece will allow all of those things to be done in-house as far as checking the calendar, checking availability. You know, who is it, what's the purpose, you know, it's.
It could also be free even internal use, like somebody's having a retirement party, so it gets it on calendar, we wouldn't charge fee for that, right, for our. And poor courthouse employee retirement. But they do that down here as well, or a birthday party or something like that, so, I think it's just a matter of somebody having a match or calendar that says. That was being used on this day at that time. Yeah, I think that we really need to.
Yeah, there is one. So would it be?
Yeah, I'm for that, right?
I don't have it, they've worked us, would it be appropriate, and tell me if I'm wrong, but if we print this application use and have the safety committee weigh in on. On it or not?
That'd be good.
I just think that.
Give it, I like that input.
Yeah, and I think it'd be good to hear, you know.
I'd bring all three of them up and, and you guys have one already, and you guys can maybe talk about how it would work.
Okay.
I'm gonna include the clerk on that too, since they're the ones, if, if we continue having them be the. Holder and the, the calendar.
Actually, it'd be easier just to forward. This.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a good idea, we're gonna do that, and.
Wouldn't be a bad habit to get into, let's say if, uh. One of the departments needed to be some vendors to go over some things, they need to have three or four people in here, if they can actually serve around, it's in use, you know?
Yeah, that's the process that should be put into place, um, um, like when I have open enrollment. Um, I go in and I put down for those open enrollments, we have the offensive driving, uh, training that we did, I put down for those.
Yeah.
As well. The same thing as you, like county car.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I sent that to the safety committee then, and then we'll just wait to hear back from them.
There's really no place else in the building to have any kind of a. Meeting of these assumptions, can you, I mean, really, it's.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, the only other thing that we utilize is courts on Columbus Day, just because they're not here on Columbus Day and we are, so we utilize that for training.
That small courtroom would be pretty handy, I think, for a lot of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, Mark, I think you were gonna go through fund balances possibly with us.
Mm-hmm. What was your guys' thought? Do you want to recess into like a? Workshop? Hold on. I have, uh. I have a packet of some information about the budget and where we're looking and keeping up and. Fund balances, I've printed off a couple emails to commissioners, but I didn't forget anything of questions that were asked. I didn't know what you're, what you're. Um, agenda we bring today, and what you wanted to do.
Workshop. But workshop, hard to do.
Okay, so if that's your, the direction, I'm gonna keep going down our agenda and get through the other items. Yeah, so county counselor updates?
I don't have anything to do with it.
Okay. Um, any need for executive sessions today? Seeing none, um. Okay.
Here, it's those.
I have a motion to approve this week's expenses.
Delete. One second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, with your motion, uh, sorry, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Any public comment? Seeing none, um. I would look for a motion to, um, adjourn into workshop and we'll be here till one, doing workshop. And.
Can you show move, second?
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.